Good evening, welcome to the Town of Auburn zoning Board of Appeals. Meeting for Thursday, October 20th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. My name is Michael Marin, I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. And I do have a couple of administrative actions before we get started. So there is a brief that I'll be reading and then another administrative piece, actually two this evening. So this is, this open meeting of the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals is being operated as a hybrid format under Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022. The public can join the meeting remotely by telephone dialing 1646-749-3112 and access code 944-571-349. Or joined by computer by visiting HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash global dot go to meeting dot com forward slash join forward slash 944571349. All supporting materials have been provided to the members of this body and are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using posted agendas. As a preliminary matter, again, this is Michael Marin, Vice Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Permit me to confirm that all the members and persons anticipated on the agenda present participating remotely and they can hear me. So members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. So I will skip over a couple of members that we know not attending this evening. So Mr. Cusi, Ms. Roche, and our Chairman, Mr. Tatro, will not be in attendance this evening. So Ms. Chacolo?
Present.
And what I'm going to do administratively is, is announce that we'll be bringing our alternates forward for full voting, voting members this evening. So Ms. Caitlin Bush?
I'm here.
And Mr. Ryan Garbedian?
Present.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Tim Pratt?
Present.
And Keith Heseltine?
Present.
Thank you, gentlemen. Please note that each vote taken in this, in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And the meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television. If there's an applicant participating remotely, we'll go ahead and ask them to state their name and address as we're attending this meeting in person this evening. And so, thank you for indulging me in that requirement. So two quick administrative pieces. So this evening, as I said, to make sure that we have a full complement and we're able to take our, our votes accordingly this evening, I'll be bringing the alternates forward. Ms. Bush and Mr. Garbedian to be full voting members in this evening. I'm assuming that there's no objection?
No objection.
Thank you. So with that, one final note that I'd like the applicants to consider this evening. So as we are not a full complement board this evening, and we have four voting members, that any applicant that wishes a vote be taken this evening, in order for the application to be approved, we would need a super majority. Meaning all the voting members this evening, all four of us, would have to vote in the affirmative. And I mentioned that for consideration because you certainly have the option to move forward this evening and request a vote or request a continuance for a time when there's a full complement of the board and a super majority would not be required. Okay, so without any additional administrative or preliminary, our first... Well, before I, before I start, if I may turn to Keith, do you know if we have anybody online? Are you on the members in this room?
I'm on the phone.
Oh, very good. And could you state your name for the record, please? Just one caller.
My name is Laurie Carbank.
Okay.
I reside at 167 Bryn Mawr.
Alright, very good. And you're not one of the applicants, is that correct? Are you attending?
I'm not, I'm interested in...
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm interested in the 404 Oxford Street.
Okay, understood. So you're attending isn't a bother and thank you for participating. So when we get to that hearing, we'll call forward any comments at that time, okay?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Is that our only remote participant? Alright, thank you very much. Alright, so without any further, further administrative comments. I'll introduce, so we have a 6:00 PM applicant, Michael and Bethany Schroder. Apologies if that's not correct. Requesting a special permit under Section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a home occupancy location at 3 Vincent Street, map 17, parcel 54. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, if, sir, if you could go ahead and approach the lectern? Oh, no, thank you. No, fair point. If you could just come up and as you're seated, if I could take... Yes, if I could take a, if I could take a vote to, a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Chacolo, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, very good. For a roll call vote, Ms. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
Apologies. Mr. Garbedian?
Approve.
It's not, it will be front of mind, I apologize. And the Chair, and the Chair approves, so the, the hearing is open. So thank you. Thanks for being here and thanks for putting up with our administrative tactics. But if you could just introduce yourselves and let us know what you're looking to accomplish, please.
Okay, my name is Michael Schroder, this is my wife Bethany. We are planning to run a business out of our home. It's a yard card business, and if you're not familiar with those, which you probably aren't because there's none around here, it's basically like a greeting card that you set up in somebody's house. So if somebody's celebrating a birthday, a wedding, anniversary, or something like that, we'd put up basically a card, it's giant letters, it says happy anniversary or happy 50th birthday or something like that. And so really, the business, although the address is our house, it's, there's not going to be too much business being done there. It's a place where we'll store inventory and that's about it. Everything else will be virtual and then set up elsewhere at other people's properties.
Is that...
Yep, perfect.
Okay. Okay, no additional comments before I open it up to the board for questions?
I don't think so.
No, go for it.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll turn to the board members and have them vet questions about your application.
Okay.
Ms. Chacolo, do you have questions for the applicant?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Are these going to be pre-printed signs?
Yes.
That you'll be storing at your house?
Yes, yes.
So will you call them in or send it in over the internet, what you want printed?
They would, somebody would actually, like say they had a child who was celebrating a birthday, they would book it through us over the internet and then say, we want it to say happy 8th birthday, so and so. We'd have the signs in our home and we'd go to their yard and put them up for them.
So we'll have basically a few alphabets of multiple colors and then like balloons, birthday presents, stuff like that, that we'd then stake into the yard.
How big are these signs?
18 to 24 inches. 18 to 24 inches.
And do they stick in the ground?
Yes.
Okay, deliveries?
Yes, we would deliver it, it would be a rental. So we would own, own the signs and then we'd rent it to someone, put it in their yard for a day and then go pick it up at night and bring it back to the house.
Deliveries to you, how will those be handled?
Oh, I'm not sure, I, we haven't ordered anything yet. I assume it'll be UPS or FedEx.
What I, what I'm, why I'm asking that specific question is, in going by your property?
Yep.
I noticed that the street is fairly narrow.
Yep.
And you don't have that much of a driveway to have a truck, a good sized truck pulled in. So do you have any idea of how they'll be delivered?
I, I think our plan is to order, to start off by ordering most of the quantity, the quantity that we'd need. Like Mike said, a few alphabets, some decorations we put around it. So I don't think there would be frequent deliveries, any more frequent than our street already gets by Amazon.
Not going to be a big box truck or something like that?
No, 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 no. I don't think so.
I don't think so. I would assume that it would be a standard UPS or FedEx truck that comes into our street multiple times a week.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have for right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Bush?
Would you, where would you store the, the signs? Are they in your house or...?
Yeah, they, they will be in the basement of our house.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
Schroder?
I have no questions at this time.
Thank you very much. I, I'm, I'm challenged because I always have questions. This board knows that, but I don't have any additional questions. I think they've been, they've been well vetted. I'm just going to ask, are there any butters here this evening to speak on behalf of this applicant? If you, if you could just come forward, sir, and apology for the formality, but we want to make sure that everyone at home can hear you. If you could just approach and state your name for the record and your comments, please?
Bill Schiebler, 5 Vincent Street. Regarding truck traffic, I mean, we have, you know, Amazon Prime comes down five, six times a day down our street, FedEx, UPS.
Is he talking, I can't hear what you're saying.
I said regarding truck traffic, Amazon comes on our street at least five times a day, as does FedEx and UPS, so there's no, not going to be any additional traffic regarding that stuff. You know, it's a nice quiet neighborhood and what they're doing is, you know, not bothering anybody. So I, you know, I definitely would recommend that you approve their request.
Thank you very much. Thank you for participating. Appreciate it. I don't think we've had anyone online, virtually, that's joined us beyond the one caller that we had earlier. And so, as our Chairman would eloquently say once back around the horn, any additional comments from the board or questions?
Not here.
Okay, alright, thank you very much. I'll take a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Motion been made in second, so Ms. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
Approve. Ms. Garbedian, I do have it. And I'm going to remember it by the end of the day. Thank you. Alright, so, so any comments, questions? Is there a motion for the 6:00 PM application?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the application with the normal rules as set forth in, in Section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaws.
Thank you, Ms. Chacolo. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion been made in second with standard conditions under the so noted bylaw. Ms. Chacolo, so we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
Ms. Garbedian?
Approve.
And the Chair approves. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
If I may, to hold you for just an additional 30 seconds. I just want to applaud your effort in coming forward. I won't mischievously say that this could happen outside of the view of the board. But it's just, as a role model, it appears that you have your children with you, but it...
Yes.
Just as, just from a role model perspective, I mean, it's, it's a great deal of respect to those of the town and to our board to come forward the way you did. So we greatly appreciate it and wish you every success.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just give them a moment to clear the room?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to close the hearing.
Didn't we already?
Did we close it?
I believe we did, Ms. Schroder.
I didn't know if we...
I appreciate your diligence, but I think that we're good. We've closed the public portion and we, we voted fully.
Okay.
And we approved, so I, I think we're good. Okay. So our next applicant this evening is a 6:05 PM applicant, Sparhawk Realty LLC, requesting a special permit under Section 9.3.5 and 3.2.2.2 and 3.2.2.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for construction of a multifamily housing location at 404 Oxford Street North, map 40, parcel 82. Is the applicant present? And I see there is an applicant that's approaching the lectern. So is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Chacolo, is there a second?
Second.
Very good. It's motion made in second, Ms. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
Ms. Garbedian?
Approve.
And the Chair approves. Okay, so...
Good evening, Brian Waterman from WDA Design Group.
Good evening. If you could make sure that you're speaking inside.
Yeah.
Okay, so that we can hear.
So I can try to... Good evening, Brian Waterman from WDA Design Group, here on behalf of Sparhawk Realty. This is for a project off of 404 Oxford Street for a special permit for multifamily. Something called my eyeballs. This project was approved via a site plan approval, conservation order of conditions, and a special permit from ZBA back in 2016 and 17. Unfortunately, due to some oversights, the permits were allowed to expire. So we've refiled with the Planning Board Conservation and tonight with the ZBA. We did receive approval by the, from the Planning Board last week as well as the Conservation Commission. So those two are done and now we're, we're here in front of you. So the property is outlined here in yellow, it's 2.18 acres. It's right across from the Horgan Skating Arena with frontage both on Bryn Mawr and North Oxford Street. Although the, the proposed project is, is at the axis off of North Oxford Street. One part of the project that was completed was in 2017, the demolition of the existing dilapidated home and garage that were on the property. Those were removed via the demolition permit in 2017. We've updated our existing condition survey to show, you know, the removal of the house and the garage. We reconfirmed the wetland boundaries with the Conservation Commission with this latest filing. And we also had a a department head meeting two months ago, I think now. We received some comments from the fire department, mainly regarding adding a painted, no parking lane along this side. It was peer reviewed before the planning board by Graves Engineering. And the, each unit has a garage under. The, the four unit building is, are each two bedroom units. And the two end units here are single bedroom. So each one had its own dedicated parking garage under with a, a spot outside. When it was approved in 2016 and 17, those spaces outside were 18 and a half feet. With this recent peer review from Graves, they had recommended going to 21 foot parking stalls outside as well as adding a turnaround prior to North Oxford Street. So the change that we did make was going to 21 foot parking area out front of each unit as well as adding this paved turnout prior to North Oxford Street. And we did add the, the parking lane for the, the fire department. We received a approval letter from Graves that everything had been addressed subsequent to the, prior to the second planning board hearing last week. And they did approve the project based on everything that was changed. Other than that, everything as you see it is identical to what was approved in 2016 and 17. Like I said, unfortunately, some oversights and, and other things that happened with the owner, the permits were allowed to expire, so they just want to re-perment it. Now, obviously, they've updated to the 21 foot parking stalls. Other than that, that's, it's, like I said, the, the four unit is sprinkled and the two unit is not. The four units required to be sprinkled. There's underground infiltration through all the roof and the pavement. And then there's an overflow basin here if, if needed. So again, that's the same as it was several years ago. Adding the slight bit of pavement with the driveways going in 21 feet, the system was already overdesigned. We did submit a new stormwater calculation that Graves reviewed and they were supportive that the small change in pavement did not offset the drainage, that it's still sufficient.
Sir, before you continue, I just had a couple of spot questions if I may.
Sure.
Before I give the board some latitude. When you, you had said a couple of different times during your brief that, that there was approvals secured. Are you suggesting that the approvals that you've secured to date on this project have been through peer review?
Yes, Graves Engineering did.
Understood. I just wanted to understand that.
Yep, no, that's fine.
And can you confirm for the board, the, the initial application for this project that was before the board? Is this a new owner of this property?
Uh, yes, it was, it was previously permitted through McCarthy and he sold it to Sparhawk.
Okay, understood that you're here representing the applicant at Sparhawk. Okay, so, so the reference to the previous application was with a previous owner?
Correct, yeah. McCarthy contract, I believe, and then he sold it to Sparhawk.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then the permit expired while Sparhawk had it.
Understood.
Yep.
Okay, so that transfer took place before the transfer, the transfer took place of the property while there was still an active permit?
Correct, yes. And like I said, Sparhawk, it must have been not long after the permit because he got the demolition permit to remove the house and garage in 2017.
Okay. Alright, thank you, sir.
Sure.
Additional comments? Can you probably open it up to the board? Okay, thank you very much. I know that we have an a butter here. Before we, we turn to the a butter, I'll go ahead and ask the board to ask questions of the applicant. Ms. Chacolo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have here a, this is, I would say a face sheet summary from the building commissioner. And where you could, where he could approve, request modifications or disapprove of this project. He has checked disapproval. And I'm going to read the comment. "Insofar as its area and, and of jurisdiction is considered, the reason for this recommendation and any suggested modifications are as follows. Applicant has a project at 3 Jerome Ave that was not built per approved plan. Building is currently being illegally occupied. I suggest that the applicant correct the issues at 3 Jerome Ave before moving forward with another project. We as representing the Town of Auburn, as well as the petitioner, I believe would be much better served if this project were put on hold. You could continue it. But I, for one member of the board, before I took any action on this request, I would want clarification from the building commissioner. Therefore, I would say we should offer the petitioner a choice of moving forward. And you have explained the caveats to moving forward or withdrawing."
No, I would definitely can ask for a continuance because this is the first we've heard of this. And I mean, that's based on...
And that is dated...
Entirely different project, so I...
It's dated 10/14/2022 and it's regarding 404 Oxford Street.
We were never, we never received that from, and it was not brought up to the Planning Board or Conservation Commission either, so... It's the first I've heard of it, but...
Would you like a copy of it?
Absolutely, please, yes. I mean, that's, that's a whole different project. Is that, I mean, I don't know, is it... This is just asking for approval for a site plan.
Pardon? Could you talk to...
This is only asking for approval for a special permit, not to construct it at this point.
I, I understand you were asking for approval for a special permit and that is what this application is for. The, the special permit that you are indeed speaking of.
Yeah.
But that comment is disappro, is below where there is disapproval by our building commissioner and the reasons that I read, he has stated.
Yep.
And Rat?
I'm trying to correct you, Ms. Chacolo, do you have...
No, that's quite all right.
Alright, very good. But, and I could, and certainly verify, I mean, this, this was added to my brief. I can appreciate if this wasn't shared with you, we'll provide a, a copy.
That'd be great, thank you.
But, but it's certainly something that, that the board would, would want to take into consideration based on Ms. Chacolo's comments and bringing, bringing to light of this is forward. Am I understanding that, that you've made the request to continue?
Yes, please. So we, I can have a chance to address this and talk to the client and find out how we proceed.
Okay.
We can wait. Yeah, we can wait till it comes back, the copy comes back, so...
Yeah, no, certainly.
Got it in front of him.
Absolutely, certainly. And so for, for that reason, I, I would suggest if, if he's going to continue, if it may not be at this point in time prudent to vet any additional questions. I know that...
Procedural question.
Ms. Garbedian?
So I know at town meeting on Tuesday, they changed the, they adopted the buy right apartments that MBTA communities are required. It was Article, I believe, 23. And it changed 3.2.2.3 to be site plan approval only. How would that affect our jurisdiction?
So it will eventually, it's a great procedural question. So town meeting would essentially ratify the town's position to adopt that as a new language in the bylaw. It would then need to proceed to the State House to be approved and ratified. It will eventually come back to us with either an approval or denial. It's doubtful that it would be denied. So when it, when it does in fact get approved at the state level, it would come back to us and it would then be within our jurisdiction and, and the new bylaw. And then we would, then we would carry that forward with any, any forward hearings. It would not affect, if we were to take votes and it affected that bylaw, we would go with the current bylaw that we have.
Okay.
Just based on, on date and legitimacy of what we have for bylaw today. Because it's, it's on its way to be a law, but it's not a law yet.
I just didn't know it needed state approval, that's all.
It does, yes, okay, fair enough. Does need state approval. Okay, thank you. I do want to be sensitive to the fact that we do have an a butter. And you can see where this hearing is going, the applicant has requested a continuance. So my, my ask is that we're going to make this one, we're going to, we're going to go ahead and take a vote. And if the board chooses to approve that continuance request, then we would go ahead and make this, this activity this evening relatively brief. And if it does come back to us, you'd have an opportunity to speak on the hearing at that time. Okay, so copy's been provided to the applicant.
Yes, thank you very much.
And you can see the language.
Yes, I do.
As written by Ms., read by Ms. Chacolo, that it would certainly be a matter that the board would want to take into consideration for the application.
Right.
Okay.
We'll get that addressed prior to our next meeting.
So for the board members, the applicant has made the request to continue. Is there a motion to accept the continuance?
Make a motion to accept the continuance and clarify for all, for all parties present as well as the applicant that this... as the applicant, that this hearing will remain, if you request a continuance, it will remain open.
Yep. That'd be great.
I approve the request.
Thank you, Ms. Chacolo, is there a second?
I'll second Mr. Chacolo's motion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bush. So for a roll call vote, Ms. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
Mr. Garabedian?
Approve.
And the chair approves. So the hearing will remain open, we won't close the hearing, you can work with Caleb's office and Phil and Chris's office to reschedule, and we will, again, we won't close the hearing, it will remain open in consideration for your approval on continuance.
Excellent.
Okay, thank you.
For the a butter, they won't get another notice.
That's a great point. And so for the a butter, and thank you for joining this evening, so what I would strongly recommend based on your interest in participating, is that when the hearing is scheduled to be continued, you can check the town website, and that'll be posted, so that you look for this hearing, and you can rejoin when the hearing surfaces in a future meeting. But there won't be another mailer, there won't be another announcement to a butters specifically on this hearing, as we only do it once. The hearing will continue, it hasn't been closed, so it would be up to you, based on our process, to just stay informed. You can certainly call the town hall and ask if you don't have access to the web and finding the documents on the town website, you can call and find out when this hearing is scheduled for one of our next meetings.
Okay.
Okay? All right, well, thank you very much for participating tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Okay, so that hearing remains open, and for our agenda this evening...
Good night, thank you.
Good evening, thank you. So our next meeting is scheduled for November 17, 2022. We don't have any other administrative topics to discuss this evening. Any other business from the board? Okay, so I will take, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion been made in second, Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
Ms. Bush?
Approve.
Mr. Garabedian?
Approve.
And the chair approves. Thank you very much, we are adjourned.